We're gonna, I'm sorry, we're gonna wait about one minute, uh, cause the audio recording on Granicus takes about forty seconds to, uh, to load up. Um, so in about a minute, Commissioner Sands, you can go ahead and begin, uh.
Noted. Thank you very much.
Confirm meeting's live.
Okay, Commissioner Sands, you can go ahead and begin the meeting.
Perfect. I call this meeting to order at seven oh eight. This is a regular meeting of Baldwin Park Planning Commission for Wednesday, April eighth, twenty twenty. Commissioner Garrido, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Yes, sir. Uh, go ahead. If, if you have a flag by you, go ahead and face the flag. Um, placing your right hand over your heart and, uh, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for Wicked Stand.
Thank you, Commissioner. Madam Secretary, will you please call roll?
Thank you, Chair Pro Tem. Commissioner Marlene Garcia.
Here.
Commissioner Christopher Garrido.
Present.
Commissioner Edith Flores.
Present.
Commissioner Edwin Borkas.
Here.
And Chair Pro Tem Christopher Sands.
Present. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Esther. So now we're gonna move on, uh, to public communications at this point. Madam Secretary, have you received any communication from the public?
Thank you, Pro, uh, Chair Pro Tem. I do have, um, something from the public I'd like to enter into the record. It reads as follows. Good evening, Commissioners, City Attorney, Staff, and any community that will be listening via live stream. My name is Jean Ayala. I am a lifelong resident and a twenty-seven-year veteran teacher for the Baldwin Park Unified School District. In addition, I have the honor to serve this community as your city clerk. I wanted to just take a moment to acknowledge publicly the amazing and outstanding job that our staff has been doing, especially during these uncertain times, particularly the planning department, which continues to afford our community, businesses and residents, the services that they need. In addition, I want to acknowledge the planning commissioners who continue to participate in their capacity to serve our community. Thank you for participating through any means necessary so that, so that your recommendations can be noted for the mayor and city council to move projects forward. Thank you everyone for your commitment and dedication to our city, our community, and to one another. Be well and be safe. Humbly submitted by Jean Ayala, City Clerk.
So certainly kind words, Jean, if you're listening. Thank you very much. Esther, was that the only, um, uh, public comment?
That is the only public comment.
Noted there. Thank you very much. So we're gonna move on to consent calendar. Um, do we have a motion to approve item one, action minutes from March eleventh, twenty twenty?
Chair member, I, um, chairperson, I'm sorry, this is Marlene Garcia. I just had, uh, one change on the minutes, cause I actually read my minutes. Uh, my name, the spelling of my name, there is no E at the end of my first name.
Noted.
That seems to be the start of the slide, so we could change that. That'd be great.
So this time, do we have a motion to approve the action minutes as amended?
I will move to approve the minutes.
Do we have a second?
I will.
Okay, so, uh, moved by Commissioner Garcia and seconded by Commissioner Garrido?
Yes.
Does that sound right? Perfect. Um, I think, um, Esther, I think, uh, for the sake of just recording all the votes, should we vote by roll call?
Uh, yes, please.
I would recommend that as well.
Commissioner Sands?
Yes.
Commissioner Garrido?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Borkas?
Yes.
And Commissioner Marlene Garcia?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. So act- action minutes from the meeting, uh, March eleventh, twenty twenty have been, um, adopted five, um, zero. Moving on to set matters, public hearing. Item number two, a consideration and adoption of a mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program in conjunction with a request for consideration and approval of a design review to facilitate the development of a two-story, fifteen thousand seven hundred twenty-five square foot industrial commercial building and a zoning variance to deviate from the minimum lot depth and minimum lot size for lots in the industrial commercial zone. Location one three oh five seven, one three oh six one, one three oh six five, Garvey Avenue, applicant, uh, Michael, don't wanna butcher the last name, um, MG Development Group, case number PR nineteen sixty-nine and ZV twenty oh two, Mr. Ron Garcia.
Good evening. Thank you, Commissioners, staff. Uh, before you, uh, again, is a project approval for a design review, uh, to merge three existing lots and a zone variance to deviate from zoning standards, uh, uh, specific to minimum lot depth and lot size, uh, within the industrial commercial zone. Uh, David, if you could, can you go to the next slide? Uh, let's go to the next one. Thank you, David. Uh, the subject's, uh, site is within the general plan best Garvey I-ten focus area. This area includes most of the area along the I-ten freeway between Syracuse and Baldwin Park Boulevard. Uh, the primary goal of this area is to encourage development of low-scale, uh, low-intensity commercial and industrial uses oriented primarily towards, uh, serving the local resident and business populations. Uh, the project site is zoned for industrial commercial uses, which includes the development of industrial parks, offices, complex, complexes and light, uh, manufacturing businesses. Uh, the project site is approximately twenty-three thousand four hundred seventy square feet and consists of three parcels. All three parcels are currently vacant and contiguous and are separated by an alleyway. Uh, the alleyway has access, uh, to Fraser Street, uh, at its western terminus and to Garvey Avenue at its eastern terminus. Uh, access to the project site is provided by Garvey Avenue and Fraser and Fair Grove Avenue. Uh, next slide, please. The proposed project, uh, consists of construction of a two-story concrete tilt-up commercial building, uh, with fifteen thousand seven hundred twenty-five square feet of floor area. The proposed building would include a thousand square feet of office space, six thousand square feet of manufacturing area, and an eight thousand square foot, uh, storage warehouse area. A total of twenty-two parking spaces are provided, uh, 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 proposed on-site. Uh, pedestrian access to the proposed building would be from Garvey Avenue with entrances on the building's eastern and western-facing wall via the pedestrian pathway that runs from the parking lot, uh, behind the facility, uh, to Garvey. Uh, landscaping is proposed on the perimeter of the site within the parking areas. Uh, the landscaping is approximately twelve percent of the overall site area. Uh, the code requires that a minimum of ten percent of the parking lot area be landscaped. Uh, landscaping, uh, proposed fronting Garvey Avenue will serve to soften the aesthetic appearance of the building from the street. Uh, final landscape plan and irrigation, uh, final landscape and irrigation plan is required, uh, per the conditions of approval. Uh, next slide, please. The proposed development will be visible from the surrounding area, including surrounding streets and buildings. Uh, the project consists of construction, again, of a two-story building with a maximum height of thirty-five feet. The proposed building is designed for single-tenant warehouse or manufacturing use. The proposed commercial building reflects a modern architectural style. The exterior of the building consists of a concrete, uh, tilt-up, uh, with decorative concrete course lines along all elevations of the building. Uh, the proposal also includes decorative metal awnings above the windows and roll-up door. Uh, the exterior facade will be painted shades of light, uh, and dark gray. Uh, the applicant is also proposing decorative wrought iron fence along the front and sides, um, of the building. Uh, here on this elevation, you can see the north and south elevation. As you can see, the, um, the course lines on, uh, the north and south elevations. Move on to the next slide. And this is the east and, uh, west elevation. Can move on to the next slide. Here's a, uh, rendering, uh, of the proposed building with the vantage point from, uh, Garvey Avenue. You can see, uh, the entrance of the building, the decorative windows, the decorative course lines along the, uh, uh, the building elevations, as well as the decorative, uh, metal awnings, uh, above the windows and the roll-up door. Can move on to the next slide. Again, here's another vantage point from, uh, Garvey. You can see the decorative windows there and also decorative, uh, window feature that goes from the first floor to the second floor on the, um, easterly edge of the front of the building. Move on to the next slide. This vantage point is, uh, looking from the alleyway. This is the, uh, rear side of the building, uh, which is the northerly side. And you can see here, parking proposed along the, um, the rear of the building as well. Move on to the next slide. Again, this is just another vantage point, um, from the rear of the building from the alleyway. You can move on to the next slide. The applicant, as indicated, is requesting a deviation from the, uh, minimum lot depth and lot size, uh, standard for lots within the industrial, uh, commercial zone. The standards, uh, require lots to have a minimum depth of two hundred feet and a minimum lot size of forty thousand square feet. The proposed site has a lot depth of a hundred fifty-three feet and a lot size of, uh, approximately twenty-three thousand four hundred seventy square feet. Approval of the variance would allow the applicant to consolidate the three parcels into one parcel and construct the proposed, uh, uh, commercial building, uh, company with landscaping and parking improvements. A resolution of approval has been prepared to grant the variance, uh, to permit the, uh, development. As you can see in this slide, this is a, uh, a parcel map showing the three parcels that are proposed to be, uh, consolidated, lots nine oh, uh, nine oh six, nine oh seven and nine oh eight. Hold on to the next slide. Uh, sequel, uh, initial study was prepared for the project, um, and was released for comment, uh, for twenty days, beginning on March second, twenty twenty and ending on March twenty-six, twenty twenty. Uh, comments were not received during that period. A mitigation monitoring program has been, uh, uh, has been put together along with the, uh, approval resolution for the approval of the MND. In regards to the, um, the design review for approval, uh, the municipal code indicates that there's a highest designated approving authority for all requested permits, that if final action, all permits be taken. Uh, therefore, the design review committee tentatively approved the design review, uh, application for the proposed project, uh, on October fourth, twenty nineteen. Uh, the approval of the zoning variance by the planning commission will also constitute the final approval of the design review, uh, application. Um, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution certifying the mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact and approving the design review nineteen dash six nine and zone variance, uh, twenty dash zero two. That concludes staff's, uh, presentation. The environmental consultant, along with the traffic consultant, uh, is available for any, any, uh, questions along with the applicant. But, uh, but that concludes the staff's presentation for the proposed project.
Thank you very much. Uh, this time, Commissioners, do you have any questions of staff? So if there's no questions, um, from the Commissioners at this point, um, I'll open up the public hearing. Um, Esther, have we received any comments in regards to this, um, this topic?
No comments have been received, sir.
Noted. Thank you very much. I now close, um, the public hearing. Uh, Commissioners, any questions of the applicant or the consultant? Seeing, uh, no questions, I move to adopt resolution PC twenty dash zero nine, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Baldwin Park adopting a mitigated negative declaration and a mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the MG Development Project, location thirteen oh five seven, thirteen oh six one, thirteen oh six five, Garvey, applicant Michael Glenn Nockis, case number PR nineteen dash sixty-nine, ZV twenty dash zero two, and adopt the findings of fact and adopt resolution PC twenty, uh, dash ten, entitled a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Baldwin Park approving a designer review to merge three parcels? And I think that needs, um, a correction, right? So that should be merge three, not four. Uh, so merge three parcels, APN eight five five six dash zero two two dash nine oh six, eight five five six dash zero two two dash nine oh seven and eight five five six dash zero two two dash nine oh eight into one parcel pursuant to sections fif- hundred and fifty dot zero eight and to deviate from the minimum two-hundred-foot lot depth development standard set forth in table one five three dot zero five zero dot zero three zero for lots in the industrial commercial zone to facilitate the construction of a fifteen thousand seven hundred and twenty-five square foot commercial building with surface parking in the IC industrial commercial zone at thirteen oh five seven, thirteen oh six one and thirteen oh six five, Garvey Avenue in the City of Baldwin Park. Location thirteen oh five seven, thirteen oh six one and thirteen oh six five, Garvey Avenue. Applicants, Michael Glenn Nockis, case number PR nineteen dash six nine, CV twenty dash zero two. Do we have a second?
I second that. Commissioner Flores is, as, uh, Commissioner Sands stated.
Noted. Thank you very much. So Esther, will you please call roll?
Commissioner Marlene Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Christopher Garrido?
Aye.
Commissioner Edith Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Edith Borkas?
Yes.
I mean Edwin Borkas, I'm sorry. Commissioner Edwin Borkas. Okay, and, uh, Chair Pro Tem Christopher Sands.
Yes. So at this time, the, uh, Planning Commission has adopted resolution PC twenty dash zero nine and PC, uh, twenty dash, twenty dash ten, adopted the findings of fact, five zero. Thank you. So at this time, we're gonna move on to the bu- set matters, public hearing. Uh, item number three, a request for approval of a conditional use permit to allow for chiropractic office. The project is located in the MU one, mixed-use one-zone. Location one four five four zero, Ramona Boulevard, unit two-ten and two-eleven, applicant, uh, Grande, case number CP twenty dash zero four, Mr. Ron Garcia.
Yes, uh, associate planner, uh, Melissa Chipris will be providing the presentation.
Hi, good evening, honorable members of the commission. Um, I will be presenting, um, our third item on the agenda. Seeing the, uh, the PowerPoint presentation at this moment, is everybody able to see it, or?
No.
No.
No, not yet.
Just wait for, uh, David?
Yeah, um, are we talking about the presentation we just had open?
Yes. So it was just the continuation of the, uh, it's the same PowerPoint?
Ten-four, my mistake.
Okay, can you go ahead and, uh, skip through to, I believe, slide eleven is where it starts? Uh, one more slide, please. Oh, for one more, sorry. Thank you. Okay, uh, so, um, before you this evening is conditional use permit application CP twenty dash zero four, uh, that is requesting approval to allow for a chiropractic medical office use within an existing two thousand three hundred and ninety-six square foot tenant space. Uh, and the project is located within the MU mixed-use one-zone. Uh, next slide, please. On February twenty-fifth, twenty twenty, applicant Edith Grande submitted the said conditional use permit application to the planning division. Uh, the proposed chiropractor medical office known as Agape Chiropractic has been operating in the City of Baldwin Park since nineteen ninety-four uh, and will be moving into a vacant tenant space within an existing building known as the Baldwin Park Professional Center. Aside from the change in location, Agape Chiropractic intends on operating under the same routine as the previous location, which was one four three three two Ramona Boulevard. Uh, a business operations plan that indicates the number of staff, hours of operation and list of services has been provided to you in your agenda packets. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so before you, we have the existing floor plan that provides separate tenant spaces, um, for spaces four through seven. Uh, next slide. Uh, the applicant, along with the building manager, will submit plans to building and safety for tenant improvements to merge spaces four, five and part of six into one large office space that will be utilized solely by Agape, uh, Agape Chiropractic. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so to conclude, staff does recommend that the planning commission approve resolution PC twenty dash zero eight to approve CP twenty dash zero four. Um, and also did wanna, uh, note that the applicant is, um, on the meeting, and I believe as well that one of the doctors for the chiropractic medical office. For any questions?
Uh, thank you very much, Melissa. Um, so at this time, um, Commissioners, any questions of staff? Great. At this time, I'm gonna open up the public hearing. Um, Esther, have you received any comments on this item?
None submitted.
Noted. Thank you very much. Um, uh, Commissioners, any questions of the applicants or of, um, the doctor? Great. So at this time, I move to adopt the findings of fact and resolution PC twenty dash zero eight, entitled a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Baldwin Park approving a conditional use permit to allow for a chiropractic medical office use within an existing two thousand three hundred and ninety-six square foot tenant space. The project is located within the MU one, mixed-one, mixed-use one-zone pursuant to table one five three dot zero seven zero dot zero two zero of the city's municipal code, location one four five four zero, Ramona Boulevard, unit two-ten and two-eleven. Applicant Edith C. Grande, case number CP twenty dash zero four. Do I have a second?
I'm a second. Commissioner Borkas.
Noted. Uh, so moved by myself, uh, Commissioner, um, Sands, uh, seconded by, uh, Commissioner Borkas. Uh, at this time, um, Esther, can you please call roll?
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Marlene Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Christopher Garrido?
Aye.
Commissioner Edith Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Edwin Borkas?
Yes.
And Chair Pro Tem Christopher Sands.
Yes. So at this time, uh, the finding of the fact and resolution PC twenty dash zero eight has been adopted, five zero. Thank you very much. So at this time, I think the next portion of the agenda is public comments, which, um, um, Esther, have you received anything else? Um, um, anything else since we, uh, since the meeting began?
No further comments have been received, sir.
Noted. Thank you very much. So at this point, I'm gonna move on to the reports of officers.
Yes, thank you, uh, Chair Pro Tem Sands. Uh, David, uh, we can go ahead and, uh, remove the PowerPoint. That's loaded on the screen. Perfect. Thank you, David. Uh, as, uh, before you is a, uh, request that the Planning Commission elect a chair and vice-chair, uh, to serve at the pleasure, um, of the commission. Uh, pursuant to the Planning Commission bylaws, a chair and vice-chair to be elected annually for the commission's membership in July. Uh, however, since the council was in process of appointing, reappointing commissioners, uh, staff felt it was best to wait until such appointments were completed. Uh, the city council appointments of the planning commission were completed, uh, this past February. Uh, the duties of the vice-chair to serve in the absence, disability or disqualification of the chair, the vice-chair shall perform, uh, all duties and be subject to all of the responsibilities of the chair. Uh, the chair's responsibilities and powers, uh, are as follows, uh, and those include presiding at all meetings of the planning commission, uh, calling special meetings of the commission in accordance with the legal requirements and the most recently adopted bylaws, uh, signed documents of the commission, see that all actions of the commission are properly taken, and finally, assist staff in determining, uh, agenda items. Uh, although, although the planning division staff provides all of the information and completes the background work required for meetings, uh, the chair should have a general understanding of Robert's Rules of Order, as well as general understanding of the, of, uh, planning concepts. Uh, any planning commissioner may be nominated to serve as either chair or vice-chair, and all, uh, planning commissioners are highly encouraged to serve in either of these two positions during their tenure on the commission. Uh, it is anticipated that the term will be in accordance with the planning commission bylaws. Um, in conclusion, staff recommends that the planning commission, uh, elect a chair of the commission and also elect a vice-chair, uh, of the commission. That concludes, uh, staff's presentation on this, uh, item.
Thank you very much, Ron. At this time, do we have a, uh, motion to, uh,
Yes, sir.
nominate a, uh, chair?
Uh, Commissioner Garrido, uh, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, nominate, uh, uh, to the chair, Christopher Sands, Commissioner Christopher Sands and vice-chair, uh, Commissioner Edwin Borkas.
Noted. Do we have a second on the motion?
I second that. Commissioner Flores, sorry.
Um, okay, so, um, so the, the motion is, uh, uh, myself as chair, thank you very much, and, uh, Commissioner Borkas as vice-chair. Um, I think at this point, Esther, uh, can you call roll? Um, but I guess a question for Robert, if, um, can I vote on, on this?
Yes.
Noted. Thank you very much. Uh, so Esther, can you please call roll?
Yes. Commissioner Marlene Garcia?
Yes.
Commissioner Christopher Garrido?
Aye.
Commissioner Edith Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Edwin Borkas?
Yes.
And Commissioner, I mean Chair Pro Tim, excuse me, Chair Pro Tim Christopher Signs, or now Chair Christopher Signs.
Yes, thank you very much. Motion passes 5-0. At this point, I just want to thank everybody of staff and, and my fellow Commissioners for the vote of confidence. And I look forward to working together for the immediate future, for sure. So thank you.
Same here likewise. I want to, I want to thank all my fellow Commissioners. I want to welcome Marlene Garcia back to do duty as a planning commissioner for our wonderful city of Baldwin Park. And I, I hope that all our Commissioners and staff and everyone else listening is safe and takes care of themselves, and we'll see each other very soon.
Thank you, my dear.
So at this time, is there any additional communication from staff?
Yes, thank you. Chair Sands. Also want to thank the Commissioners and staff for being patient as we prepared for this meeting and this forum. Very happy that the meeting went out, went without any hiccups. I do want to remind the Commissioners that there is a Planning Commission meeting scheduled for the 22nd of this month. We have two items on the agenda that we need to move forward with, and you'll receive an agenda and similar instructions as you were instructed for this meeting and in this forum for the Zoom virtual meeting. And lastly, I also want to congratulate Melissa Trippris on her promotion to associate planner. For those of you who haven't noticed, but I'm very happy to announce that she's now an associate planner within the Planning Division, very proud of her for all of her hard work and efforts that she's provided to, to the city and also the Planning Division. And we all look forward to working with her years to come.
Thank, thank you for that, Ron. I did want to say just very quickly, I, I really love my Baldwin Park team. I think we're a very great team here, and I'm just excited, you know, for all the future projects that we're going to be having coming up. It's going to be a very busy and hectic year once we're past this tough time, but I'm really excited to see Baldwin Park grow. So thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. You know, we look forward to working together. So you've been a great asset to the team, and we look forward to what the future holds. And also, I just want to make general comments to the team, just making sure that everybody's staying safe. Can't wait for the day that we can all meet together. But I appreciate everything that Ron and team and the IT team were able, everything they did to pull this meeting together, and it's actually a success. So thanks, everybody.
Mr. Chairman, this is Robert Tofoya.
Yes, Robert.
I just wanted to congratulate you, Mr. Chairman, for your election and also Vice Chair Borcas. Congratulations. I've worked with you previously. I look forward to working with you again. I think you both make a very good team. So, once again, congratulations. And I also did want to say thank you to the staff, to Mark and to Ron and the others for everything they did to assist me and others to make sure that we were able to do this and it was able to go off without a hitch. So thank you to everyone there at Baldwin Park or wherever you are.
Thank you very much, Robert.
Thank you, Robert.
At this time, is there any additional communication from the Commissioners? Okay, so at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
So Esther, I guess we'll call roll?
Yes. Chair Pro Tim Christopher Signs?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwin Borcas?
Yes.
Commissioner Ed Flores?
Aye.
Commissioner Christopher Gerito?
Aye.
And Commissioner Marlene Garcia?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes 5-0. This meeting is adjourned at 7:43. Viva Baldwin Park, and everybody be safe.
Viva Baldwin Park.
Viva Baldwin Park.
Viva.